My name's Kirsten Gove and I'm going to be the prompter of all the stories and tales today. I'm the one who's got the unenviable task of keeping this panel in line today. I hope the session ahead is both entertaining and amusing in equal measure. It's not really a session, it's more of a celebration, I think. I think it's fair to say that the 50th milestone of Offshore Europe has made us, some of us, all too aware of our own advancing years, quite a sobering thought. So let me take you back to 1973, if you will. The 20th to 23rd of March, to be precise. The Paris Peace Accords had been signed to formally end American military involvement in the Vietnam War and the last American combat troops were leaving Saigon. Oil was generating inflationary forces, increasing energy and commodity prices, and at the same time, the economy was in recession. Edward Heath was Prime Minister in the UK and Richard Nixon was President. Slade were at the top of the UK charts with Come On Feel The Noise. Donny Osmond, T-Rex, David Cassidy, they were all in the top 10 in the UK. And the biggest grossing movie of that year was The Exorcist. A new type of food, chili con carne, was taking the British population by storm along with bell bottom trousers, crochet knits and hip huggers. I think a few of our panel probably owned one of them, Jim. Look good in your hip huggers. North Sea gas fields were becoming well established after first being brought onshore in 1967. And oil finds followed and the North Sea oil and gas industry had been born, centreing here in Aberdeen. Now, the first oil and gas show, Offshore Scotland, as it was first known, was pioneered and launched in the Chemistry Department car park at the University of Aberdeen, with the conference taking place just up the road at the city's Arts Centre. I am reliably informed that Aberdeen experienced a minor heatwave that year at the week of the event, something similar to this week itself. And it made it rather uncomfortable for the 140 or so exhibitors who were under the canvas roof, despite those sticky conditions. Offshore Scotland was very successful and plans were hatched for the next conference and exhibition. Emboldened by the success and recognising the potential for a much larger event, the show moved to the outskirts of Aberdeen, the Bridge of Don Showground, which I'm sure many of you will remember, which would later become the site of the Aberdeen Exhibition and Conference Centre, the AECC. With this increased amount of space and scope, the event was renamed. And in September 1975, Offshore Europe came to town. This is how it was reported at the time by the BBC.
A city of tents has grown up to the north of Aberdeen to house the biggest exhibition of its kind ever held outside the United States. Twenty thousand people will spend the rest of the week wheeling and dealing for a slice of the North Sea oil market. They've come here from almost every country in the world and taken over Aberdeen. There were three mile traffic jams on the way to the exhibition today and every hotel within 100 miles is fully booked. A luxury liner has been moored in the harbour and some oilmen are paying £75 a night to stay there during the week. Others are commuting by aircraft from London and Glasgow. Optimists in the industry say that the sheer size of this exhibition is an answer for those who believe that the oil companies are losing interest in the North Sea. Certainly barely a third of the total investment in the North Sea has as yet been made. There are still several thousand million pounds' worth of orders to be won and the competition for them is fierce.
A whopping £75 for a hotel room in Aberdeen per night, can you imagine? That vast tented village known fondly as Tenty Toon is something which we're about to hear more about from our guests today. So without further ado, can I ask my panel to join me here on the sofas on stage? Please welcome Judith Patton MBE, Project Director of All Energy and Decarbonise, Shan Lloyd Rees, the UK MD of Mainstream Renewable Power, Gordon Ballard, the Chairman of Apito International, Stuart Broadley as the CEO of EIC, the Energy Industries Council, and Mr Jim Chalmers from R&amp;M Engineering. Please give them a warm round of applause. Thank you, everyone. I can honestly say I've been really looking forward to this all week. Your combined memories and recollections over the five decades of offshore Europe and what a journey it's been, I can't wait to hear your memories. Let's begin with some of our video contributions today. Three industry legends who were there at the very beginning, including, of course, David Stott, who was the founder of Offshore Europe, who are going to tell us the memories of that first event.
Basically, I'd been involved with a small show in Great Yarmouth in 1971 called Ocean X about the Southern North Sea. And at the time, they were announcing all the exploration finds in the Northern North Sea. And I knew Aberdeen a little bit because I'd been involved as the editor of Commercial Fishing Journal and had spent a lot of time there in the 1960s. So it seemed to me that Aberdeen would be the ideal place for an oil show, looking forward. And I went to Aberdeen. The university were very kind to me, offered me a site, in the Chemistry Car Park, actually, to put some tents up, which I duly did. And they had the Arts Centre as the conference place. And it was in March and I was told by our Dutch exhibitors, I was mad, crazy to have this show in March. It actually went very well, 70 degrees and a blue sky, with about, I think, 70 exhibitors. And everybody seemed quite pleased with it. What I do recall is that the day after the show ended, it snowed at Aberdeen, so we were very lucky.
It's quite funny looking back because if I remember, right, it was only about a dozen stands or something, you know, to work the Offshore Europe today. But hey, that was the start of it, you had to start small and then grow and, oh no, it was a very small exhibition, list my memories, they'd sell them early.
That's a very good question for me because I actually went to the first Offshore Europe, which was in the early 70s, actually held in a field just out in the outskirts of Aberdeen. It was about 10% of the size of the Offshore Europe as it is now. But for me, it was the first realisation that our city and region was about to be significantly changed. I didn't quite realise just what a great adventure I was setting out on and it was a standout moment.
Judith, we saw David Stott and we'll see more from him during our panel. You saw him yesterday, didn't you? Was he good for him?
Yep, day before yesterday. He, to me, is the most inspirational man I have ever had the pleasure and joy of working with. I didn't get involved in 73, but I did in 75. I met him at a conference on China's oil industry in Glasgow. He looked, which I won't go into for obvious reasons because we're talking about offshore Europe, but he was the only person remotely like a journalist left because everybody else had gone to file stories. And he looked at me from an enormous height and said, "We've done a good job here." I expect you know about us, we're organising the largest show that's ever been held in the oil and gas industry outside America. And I said, "No, never heard of you." But then I knew nothing about oil, in all honesty. And so he said, "Oh." And I said, "Well, you should use me." And he said, again, from a grave height, "We've got somebody, thank you." And so I'd only had a baby six weeks before, so I went back to my child and two weeks later, got a phone call saying, "How many hours can you give us?" And I was still giving those hours until my last show was in 1999, so a rather long period. And I must say, when he went through all the list of everything that was around in 73, I was just sitting there going, "Yes, yes, yes, yes."
Good times. And what are your memories? Well, let me ask you first of all, because offshore Scotland, as it was, for one year only, it was offshore Scotland and then we would now call it a rebrand, wouldn't we? Offshore Europe, just two years later, what was the thinking behind that?
I think it was largely because at the same time, over the North Sea in Stavanger, the Norwegians were looking at holding a show, ONS, which of course still runs and still runs alternate years. Thankfully, the two organisers got together. How advanced are you? How advanced are you? David, you have 73. And he felt it was much more important, really dipping a toe in the water when you talked about Dutch exhibitors, proved that this was not just about Scotland. It was what was going on in the North Sea, it was therefore a European show.
Yeah. And Tenty Toon, that we heard there, what's...
Well, you see, I actually misheard a lot on that. I only know because I was, the conference was at the university still. So I was down the road looking after the press, going to the conference. Meantime, Mayhem was happening at the Bridge of Don. God was the, I can't personally blame God, but rain was descending in the sheets, mud was like it had never been before. It was kind of interesting and exciting, but really, the magic thing, I was in advertising agencies in the 60s and I thought I'd had my really buzzy and exciting moment. But I suddenly discovered something that was just as exciting because George Williams, who was head of UCA at the time, there was a reception and a cayley at Marshall College, whatever it's called. And young men were sitting around him, kneeling around him, "George, tell us about how you found that well in Nigeria." And I thought, "This is quite extraordinary." It is odd, the things that catch your imagination, I thought, "I want more of this." And in fact, so I did have more and more and more. And I must tell you something really funny, I looked in at the media centre here, which is in a really tidy room. We used to have 300 journalists from all over the place, but that, again, we can come to later.
Yeah, yeah. Jim, you were there in 1975, I'm not mistaken.
75, Kirsten, that was my first one. I was working as a plumber in Aberdeen at that time and coincidentally, 75 was a great year. I was actually working in John Woods' house, putting in his central heating, believe it or not. And at that time, it was invitation only to the, we called it the Oil Show, you know?
Invitation only?
It was invitation only.
No, it wasn't, I checked this with David and it, the exhibition was not, it was always free.
Talk amongst yourselves while I do this.
Anyway, it was difficult to get a ticket. It was the hottest ticket in town.
That's, let's stick with that.
The hottest ticket in town. And to get a ticket, some guys would go to the show and at night, in the pub, they would sell a ticket to someone for 50 quid.
No. This just shows how brilliant Aberdeenans are at making money because it was actually free to attend the exhibition.
But they would sell the ticket, you know. But at that time, we'd, we had to park down on the beach, on the beach expanse, there were buses running down King Street back and forth and it took you probably an hour and a half from the beach expanse to get to the show, you really did. 75, a great year because that was the start of offshore Europe at the Bridge of Don. It was also the first time oil came to the UK from the Transworld 58 from their Gail Field and following that from there, Forties kicked off November, I think it was. And it was also the year I got married. So coming on from there, the Oil Show is still going strong, the Forties Field is still going strong and my wife's still working. And that's my memories of the first Oil Show, how it worked. Again, getting there, people would go, a lot of the guys had never been in, I'd never knew anything about oil, they would take their CVs, they'd go to all the companies, it wasn't as much CVs then, it was letters, you know. There was no mobile phone, so it had to be letters. They would do that, introduce themselves to people, try and pick up a job, you know. And it grew from there into what it is today, it really, really, a great opportunity. So I can tell you more, but we'll go into the next questions.
Oh, I know, I know. I mean, us Aberdeenans would love to complain about traffic chaos, don't we? Makes the headlines, traffic chaos in Aberdeen. But back then, it was real traffic chaos, wasn't it?
David made the point that driving with the Secretary of State from the university out to the Bridge of Don, they had to go in the other lane and everybody was...
They drove in the wrong direction, didn't they? The wrong lane, yeah.
I don't know if anyone noticed on the clip, there were no Range Rovers or Audi's or BMWs then, were there? It was all escorts and Angliers and Hellmanips, it was, you know.
Good times, good times. Stuart, the EIC were there in 1973, Offshore Scotland, weren't they?
Yeah, so...
You weren't there because you're far too young.
Bless you. I wasn't there though, no. So EIC is 80 years old this year, so we've been doing all this research on our history and as part of that, yeah, we found out our involvement, actually, we sort of corporately lost the memory of how much involvement we'd had in offshore Scotland. But yeah, we were there. So we started in 1943 and we were set up as the Council of British Manufacturers of Petroleum Equipment. And there really was an industry in the UK then, so it was all about trying to compete with the Americans in the war effort. They were building refineries around the world to fuel the war. And they, the Cabinet's office in the UK wanted a trade association to win more UK content of American business around the world and that's why we were set up. So our first event, 1944, was a movie event. We hired a movie theatre and it was about the Anglo-Iranian oil industry. Just shows you how things change, right? Our next event was a three month boat trip, delegation to the Caribbean. Three month boat trip to the Caribbean, not bad, eh?
Sign me up.
Anyway, so we did a lot of research and as we're sort of tracking through into the 70s, it was literally the 70s where suddenly our members, and we had about 300 members in the 70s, they were all British manufacturers. Back then, we weren't allowing any contractors or service companies to be in membership. It had to be a manufacturer, it had to be a pure exporting business. And that's when we started to get companies saying, in fact, I've got notes here, July 71, from our board meetings, yes, I went through every board meeting of the 80s to do the research on our history and we're issuing a book soon on it. I'm a geek, aren't I? July 71 was the first reference we made to three of our members, three, saying they might take the plunge and look at the Aberdeen service market. And then in July 71, also Shell and BP came to present to our members to say, "Hey, the North Sea's now a great market." And of course, Forties and Brent followed very quickly after that. February 72, we formed our first North Sea Action Committee. And then that lead, that led to, actually, we had 50 companies then, suddenly, that were expressing an interest, so things were moving. January 73, the DIT, which is now the Department of Business and Trade, but back then it was DTI, they set up a meeting with us to discuss, "We've got to get more serious about the North Sea." And in March 73, the Offshore Supplies Office was set up, OSO, which was of course then a coordinated front by industry and government to make sure UK content was achieved in our industry. And what's really interesting is, back then, the sort of general view was, in the early 70s, that this very small industry, which was basically just a national, it was National Gas, it was the only customer for our gas that was being made out of the North Sea back then, it was seen that we only had 30% UK content of that business. And the OSO was originally set up to try and get that to 70% content of what BBC, of course, sure already is supposedly, an under threat industry, it might not continue. And so 1973 then, yeah, first event, Offshore Scotland happened. We had 19 of our members that exhibited at that first event, so I guess you were telling me 180 companies, did you say, were at the first one?
Well, you said 140 and David also, in his book that he's written for his grandchildren, said 140, but then in the clip, he said 70. I think there must have been sharers, so I think we can play that game.
Well, 19 of those were our members and we had a cocktail party.
At?
At the Treetops Hotel.
For the Aberdeenans in this audience, the Treetops Hotel, you will have been, won't you?
Sadly now closed, of course.
Yeah.
And then, yes, and then we set up our first office, we actually opened our office in 1974 and then in 1975, we had 60 companies come to the second show. And what you may not know is we were a sponsor of the first show, according to my notes, and we got commissioned on bookings. But SVE in 1978 stopped that, we weren't allowed to then be a sponsor in the show. I think because we were getting too much commission, probably Judith, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know either, but there we go. Anyway, so yeah, so we were right at the heart of it. But the industry was right at the start as well, so I think it's really interesting to remember how really inaugural that whole time was.
Yes. Well, I'm not going to ask the youth policy in the middle here to give us your recollections of 1970 because clearly we're far too young and weren't there. But the show, as we know, grew and grew. Let's take a look now at some of the video memories of how the show grew over that next decade.
We were a very small business, very inexperienced at exhibition organising, but 75 came along and that's where Tenty Toon originated. We were offered a big site at Bridge of Don, which you know, and we developed this show at a speed that amazed us completely and we were frankly denoued by exhibition inquiries and we really didn't have any infrastructure to make any sense of. But we put it all together the best we could. I'd hired some people who were technical exhibition experts and they did their best. But frankly, when the show came, it was clear that we were really badly underprepared. On the opening morning of the show, the centre of Aberdeen was completely locked down, cars could not move and I found myself with the Secretary of State for Scotland being driven in the official car down the wrong side of the road towards the exhibition centre from the conference hall with commercials who were there, had been there past, chasing their visitors as we went past, it was that bad. Somehow, and then of course it rained like hell for a couple of days, we finally just about got through it, it was fairly obvious that even though the show, I suppose commercially, worked fairly well, the infrastructure was a complete disaster and we had to do better.
Yeah, I think, the first one there. Old leaky tents they had, Talbot Marlowe came along with the, with the Avaglen Orbit Building, that was a fantastic building, just six acres of building, right? And we put it up in two to three weeks. It was fantastic, we're way ahead of ourselves, still more than today, all these years later. But, and I didn't leak, so I remember I was up and down that, that buildings, just typical me, I'm right on a job, you know, encouraging the guys and helping the guys and...
Well, the most memorable, I suppose the first thing to say is, between 75 and 85, it was a struggle to survive, not because the show wasn't well received in terms of all the business being done, but because the infrastructure was so appallingly bad and we were being increasingly told that we had to do better. And the only way we could do better was by making sure that there were some permanent buildings there. We are, aware of it, a small company, we didn't have much in the way of resources, but we put so much money as we had into developing better facilities in terms of much better space for, flooring space for the exhibition. And ultimately, we hired some architects and got on with designing the original Bridge of Don buildings, which we partly financed ourselves with help from Scottish Federal Agency, the banks and this and that and the other. And in 85, which was the most memorable year, I suppose, we opened those facilities. Mrs Thatcher came to open the show, which was an enormous honour for us. And to that extent, from that point onwards, the show took on a much more appealing and professional appearance, although it cost us very dear because obviously we had financial constraints because of what we'd had to borrow to build the place.
When I was doing my research, that was something which I wasn't aware of as, you know, living in Aberdeen all my life, just the role that Offshore Europe itself took in creating the AECC.
A hell of a risk David took.
An absolute risk, yeah.
There was a lien on his company, on his house, on the whole thing. It was a tremendously brave move, but without doing that, really, you couldn't carry on as it was.
Well, we wouldn't have been here today, would we?
No. I mean, interspersed with all of that, you saw the yellow and white structures, those were ones that Jimmy Milne introduced, the spandrel structures, which were quite extraordinary but took an age, it covered six acres, I believe. And it was very odd because they were strips and stuff that went over, over, over and reached the ground, but imagine a woman putting her skirt into her knickers, they were pushed back up with a guttering through, but you could see from one side of the hall to the other before exhibitors came. That did move us on. And then there were more professional marquees, we weren't allowed to call them that, temporary structures that were available, that could be erected quickly. But it needed something permanent. It was a joy to have Margaret Thatcher there, although if I may just...
Did you not have to escort her to the ladies? Did you not have to escort her to the ladies and get her coffee?
Well, you see, I didn't, I got the wrong message. I got messages back through the show, she wants to hold a press conference, it had always been said she wasn't going to, but it was the time of riots in the Birmingham area and it was obvious she wasn't going to talk about oil, I didn't think. And when, and I had to meet her at the front door and she said, "I need to go somewhere." So I imagined, I'd been told there's a special loo set aside for her. So we were on our way to the loo and she suddenly said, "This will do nicely in a corridor." And I sort of thought, strange habits this woman's got. "I need to talk to my people." So I thought, well, she hang around while she talks to her people? And I thought, no, coffee not far away, would you like a cup of coffee? Strong, black and nothing in it. To this day, I wonder what the hell she expected me to put in beyond... Off I went, got it and I had heard that if you put a spoon in a cup of coffee going over points somewhere like Clapham Junction that's got lots of rails, it doesn't spill. So optimistically did this rush back, handed it over and passed the test.
Good. That's a great story. Gordon, when do you remember your first visit to Offshore Europe? Do you know the year, can you remember?
Well, the first time I was aware of it, I was actually a junior reservoir engineer with BNOC, British National Oil Corporation, who do you remember that, back in the day? And I didn't come, but I remember them talking about it that summer and everyone's off in the mid, late 70s, it would be, late 80s. But probably I first came in the 90s, so it was quite a bit further on. I was working for Slumberj at that time and it was a big show for Slumberj, you know, we, it was ONS and Offshore Europe with two big shows in Europe and then OTC in the States. And they were big shows, we launched new products, they were the days when there's a big product launch and you'd have a, the product team would come in and, you know, it was, that was actually the official launch, it was a big deal, Offshore Europe at that time for the product side of it.
How was Offshore Europe perceived then, do you think?
Well, I would say it was the top three shows, you know, it was the, say the two, it was ONS, Offshore Europe, they were alternate and then OTC was US one. And that's how you did it, you either chose OTC or Europe for launching the products. And in those days, they loved hardware, you'd have a kit there, out in the front of the...
Oh, fabulous.
It was a shame actually because here it was a bit tricky to do it, but that was a good thing, you used to get a lot of kit, which was a bit trickier here. And that was one of the key great things was seeing that kit.
You remember bringing in cranes to get the kit in? Just to get the kit in at that time, you know, it was massive cranes and some of the kit, I mean, massive stuff, diving bells, things like that, you know, you don't see so much of it now, you know.
I think there was a problem on the...
Wow, it's fantastic.
Yeah, it really was, you know.
But that was it, so that, just seeing that sheer amount of kit and the technology, that was the first thing that struck me. And it was a big show, well, it still is a big show for Slumberj, I'm sure, and the others of course.
Just, I was just going to say, just to back that up, so, because we do pavilions at all the shows and we have done for like 60 years and it was Offshore Europe, OTC and ONS, the original big three shows. Adipac that we now regard today as this huge show, it's only been around for 20 years.
Yeah, it's pronounced hugely.
Yeah, it's the baby in the pack, isn't it? So we're thinking you maybe your memory starts in early 90s, Shan, you were speaking and I think it's maybe late 80s that you came to Aberdeen and would you remember Offshore Europe?
So it was the late 80s I came to Aberdeen, probably my first Offshore Europe was the early 90s, again from there. And, you know, it was the time of deep water field developments, more complex big structures engineering in the North Sea. And in fact, the Angolan Basin was just opening up, there was huge excitement around that. And at the time, I worked in Halbert and Brown and Root and it was a real big deal for us as well. The talk, we had big engineering teams in Aberdeen for the ETAC development and in London and in fact, we had the Andrew Field going through fabrication, the platform up at our Nig facility. But the planning would take months and the discussion and the buzz around which bits of technology would we be showcasing, what would we be launching? And of course, there was the old tech, the old exhibition stand at the time, which became this vast, tented, leaky area with woefully bad parking all around it from there. But it was fantastic, it was full of companies with kits. All of the innovation, all of the cutting edge technology that was very focused on the industry at that time. And if I go back, even I remember, you know, the 3D seismic advances that were being made, the reservoir simulation, the column tubing for well intervention. And yeah, Slumberj nearly always had the coolest stand, Halbert and hated that and we tried hard, but Slumberj outperformed each time. Always big kits that you could play with. And in fact, at the time, it was some of the best coffee as well on the Slumberj stand. I will say this year, Aker has... I will say this year, Acca has Fidman Coffee on its stand, which is a great local company. So I think, so over the years, you know, whilst over the years we've seen the use of ties decrease from back in the day, the big bold paisley patterns, and you saw some of that on the video as well, or on the tinted, tinted glasses as well, um, were prevalent. Now you're down to almost no ties, but the technology focus has remained. And I've walked around here the past two days and it's absolutely phenomenal. And you've seen the technology focus and the, the new technologies, the, the launching and following our industry and shaping our industry as, as it comes, also adapt as our industry has adapted, depending on the basin that you're in. So it's gone from the large field developments to the, uh, more marginal field developments, the subsea step outs, the late life extensions, the life of field services and then decon. And of course now, particularly this year, there's a huge buzz around the place because we've got a huge surge now in a future energy mix that's coming and the solutions, the technology we've got are equally relevant. So, so for me, you know, I still feel a great buzz when I come here.
Oh yeah, there's always a buzz. And, and, uh, like you, I first started going to Offshore Europe in, in the early nineties and, and I was coming obviously as a young journalist and we were told just to go out to Offshore Europe and just get stuff, just film stuff. Um, and there was always enormous great kit and you'd be like, what on earth is that? It was baffling for a young naive journalist who didn't know anything about the industry. And it was definitely a theme that we're speaking about because, you know, during the show, I'm going around with O E T V and interviewing exhibitors that, you know, gone are the days where it was just these big enormous pieces of kit because the, the real, the real exciting stuff, it's all on computer screens, there's nothing so much to see, it's all the, the intelligence, the, the data and the digitisation that's all happening and it's, uh, no less exciting than it was back in those days. Really, um, it, it was really great. My, one of my earliest memories is, um, interviewing Gordon Brown, um, at Offshore Europe, you know, the, the big names just always come and as a young journalist, it's like, gosh, I'm interviewing, yeah, prime ministers.
And do you remember he always had, um, font size twenty on all his briefing notes? I think he was very short sighted.
I do remember that.
And, uh, so you could stand quite a way away from him and actually read what, uh, what his briefs were. I remember that, sat next to him on flight.
Oh, that, yes, so that was so nice.
So, um, it was, um, but he was a super nice guy, super pleasant.
Yeah, I remember feeling really quite intimidated because I was so young and I always got lost. I always got lost at Offshore Europe and I always got sore feet, I don't have you but, um, I don't get lost anymore, but I still get a sore feet. Um, let's have a wee look now because, uh, Sean, you've very much touched on it, the, the key themes, um, that we've seen at Offshore Europe over the years and of course, technology is such a driver these days. Let's get the, um, the recollections, um, on our video contributors, some of the, the themes over the years and what we can expect to see.
I think the two things that I can recall in particular are, uh, we had the, um, Elfer Piper, um, disaster in nineteen eighty-six, which all sorts of people lost their lives. From that point onwards, health and safety became a key issue. It had not been really discussed at all before that, but from that point onwards in the conference and elsewhere, it became a major issue pretty obviously. That was the first thing. Um, and the second thing was that perhaps in the late eighties to the early nineties, uh, all of a sudden, great people talk about decommissioning, um, and the cost of decommissioning and how it's going to be done and so on and so forth. And, um, I'm not so sure whether that still, the conversation is going on, but those are the two things that I recall as being most, um, perhaps interesting developments in my time.
The wind industry now, decommissioning. And I read the other day, two thousand wells has to be decommissioned. That is twenty billion pounds. I mean, that's an industry in itself. Offshore wind is an industry in itself. So, so, and we're involved, not in decommissioning, but we're involved in everything else.
I think, uh, Offshore Europe can really set the agenda and show leadership in terms of focusing on some of the key areas that we need to be really thoughtful about. Obviously, security of energy supply, uh, climate change and the energy transition and of course affordability. I think the trilemma is very much here and happening and I think Offshore Europe has a key role to play in thinking through how we address each of those challenges.
So much we can discuss there and, and obviously we've, we've been all talking in the, the lead up to this event, but I think something that we all mentioned was, uh, one of the, uh, the changes in focus and, and the very visible changes to Offshore Europe through the years has been the, the presence and the role of women in the energy industry. And the, the whole diversity and inclusion piece, which is now, you know, part and parcel of, of this event. Um, um, age across the board, uh, women in leadership roles, how things have changed because, um, there weren't probably many women when you were first going. Would that be fair to say, Jill?
When I first went offshore, nineteen seventy-six, when I joined Rig Blast in seventy-eight, uh, there was no women at all offshore. But then, back in nineteen eighty-seven, I was working on a debris brother hookup for Marathon Oil and both Worley or Peed away at that time were there, so were the EC. And one day helicopter landed and there was eight women came off the platform, eight come off the helicopter on the platform. They were out there to work. Some of them went in as stores person, some of them then to do fire watching and some of them were then just general helpers. There was one particular lady and her name at that time was Jill Chalmers and she was no relation to me whatsoever, I can assure you that. But I got to know Jill and after I finished the Bribi hookup, it was nineteen ninety-eight, she says, "I'm going to try and get my, my, so, get a career in this business." Over the past sort of fifteen, sixteen years, Jill Chalmers got married, she's now Jill St Clair and she's one of the top H S E advisors working in Aberdeen. And Sean, I think she worked for Acca at one time, she'd worked for Petrofact, she'd worked for Worley. So even back in nineteen eighty-seven, women had a presence then. And it's great that they have, they have come full circle, you know, they really have. And it's great to see people like Sean and others doing that in the business, you know? Because again, go back to when Offshore Europe started in seventy-five, the only women who were at the exhibition at that time were scantily clad ladies on top of motorbikes trying to show off the sort of...
Now, Jill.
The equipment that was on display, you know, that's, and that, that was how, and there was more men attracted to that shows than there was women, you know? And, and you, you just can all realise that, I'm sure you remember that day, you know?
They were selling drill bits for some reason.
Sorry, Sean?
They were selling drill bits.
Yeah, they were, you know, but, uh, but really it's a, uh, women have come a long way and it, and it's great to see them doing that, it really is. And Jill's still in the industry today and I think she's in a senior role in Petrofact, you know?
And I mean, Offshore Europe is reflective of, of the industry as a whole now, isn't it? And the, the, the efforts that's been made by industry to encourage young, I mean, we, I was at the Shell stand this morning and now it's been a long term commitment from Shell, uh, not just at Offshore Europe, but, uh, in the schools and in the school curriculum, uh, to encourage and bring on, uh, girls in energy. Um, and I think, you know, Sean, I'm look, I'm looking at you because obviously you've been involved in many panels and discussions about, uh, promoting women into leadership roles.
Yeah, and I think the, I mean, diversity, the, the need for greater diversity and inclusion in our industry is a continued discussion. And it keeps moving forward. Certainly when I started in the oil and gas industry, um, there were ver, there were less women again, um, in, involved in it. And I worked offshore for two years at the beginning of my career and I was the only one offshore.
Yeah.
Um, in the field at that, that particular point. And you look at some of the earlier videos, it's a sea of men. But if you look around Offshore Europe today, far greater diversity, far better balance. So we are gaining ground in that way and in fact, my own daughter's now in the industry as well. So it's, we, we are moving from that perspective, but there's still so much more I think that we need to do. I think we've done a lot in terms of putting in place the right processes, the right prioritisation so that it's on the agenda, we focus on it, we measure success, but there's this whole piece around culture and values and the work-life balance and how do you attract the next generation in? And you need to attract them into STEM subjects from a very young age, so, so we still have a lot to do.
Yeah, and Offshore Europe...
One thing we introduced at Rig Blast in two thousand and six, uh, I used to do a lot of offshore management, I'd normally do it in twelve to fifteen a year. And we started taking girls from the H R department, the H S E department to give them the experience of offshore. And at that time it was easier to get them offshore because you got dispensation. If you're all away for one night or two nights, the girls didn't have to do the survivors or anything like that, you know? That's all changed though. But it gave them a sort of insight into how it was offshore. Because when you're sitting back in an office, you don't know what's happening offshore at all, but they, they sent sort for, for themselves, you know? They all loved it and then they would tell that to counterparts and other companies. And most companies started doing that, bringing ladies in to go offshore visits and stuff and then realised that, that women do it all the time now, you know, they're, they're permanent.
Well, the significance isn't lost on me this morning when I'm going to the Shell stand and interviewing them about, um, women in energy, but it was with Shell, but I got my first couple of trips offshore, uh, back in the nineties and I was forever, forever grateful for that. And Gordon, you, you want to say something?
Yeah, people might remember, uh, Women in Energy, we had in twenty thirteen, we arranged and we, um, Royal Highness Princess Anne came here and hosted a lunch with head of H R from Slumberj, Lady Stephanie Cox, two others talking exactly about these things and she only came because she was comfortable with the industry. Had chaise and she was, she was really great, I mean, you know? And she went down, toured around the stands, showed that, as she always has a real degree of interest and she was a great champion. And, you know, Offshore Europe, you know, we shouldn't beat ourselves up too much, Offshore Europe is absolutely, um, a part of that and it doesn't, doesn't everything it can demonstrate that. You see everyone round the room, round the show. Nowadays, offshore you talk about it.
Yeah.
Completely changed, um, and she was there, she was a great supporter and, uh, she was there because she believed in what we were doing.
Uh, so that was ten years ago.
That was twenty thirteen.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and to add to that, I think the, where Offshore Europe has done really well too is in the Schools Day, you know, on the Friday. You bring in the children from the schools, all of them, they all see, I think they're more interested sometimes in the gadgets and the gizmos that they're given than anything else, but it's an early awareness.
Yes.
And it's a great balance thing. So, so I think, yeah, Offshore Europe does have a lot to pat itself on the back for, but we, we still have a way to go.
Talking about the gizmos, I always remember, um, I think it might have been about ten years ago, seeing a, an elderly lady going around the show out at the A E C C, um, with a Zimmer, you know, a walking frame. And on that she had all her carrier bags tied on to the Zimmer full of the cuddly toys and, you know, I think she was doing her Christmas shopping for her grandchildren, but, you know, the freebies were always good. And let's bring it back on a more serious note, a more sensible note. Um, some of the, the themes, we heard, um, Deirdre talking about the, the trial, the energy trilemma. Now, obviously there's been, you know, if you're attending the panels and meeting people on the stands, that's, uh, very, very much, uh, at the forefront of, of discussion. And certainly among the supply chain, because this has always been an event for the, for the supply chain, hasn't it?
Yeah. Uh, it's, I want to go back to that BBC clip at the start where, uh, Michael, what was his name, Michael?
Burke.
Burke, uh, was talking about, you know, some kind of like the threat to the industry, is it nearly over? This was back in seventy-five. Uh, so, uh, and it kind of feels a little bit like, now here we are again, just coming out of that, is the industry over? And we're starting to have a more balanced conversation again. Uh, back doing the research of E I C, or the councillors, we were called back then, in early fifties, we were a hundred percent oil and gas business back then. We were approached by the UK Atomic Energy, uh, Organisation, which was a new organisation set up by the British government. Uh, and they came to us, uh, as the council saying, "You've got access to hundreds of British manufacturers, uh, we want to access your supply chain to set up the nuclear supply chain." Uh, we said no, uh, because we felt that was a threat to the oil and gas industry and in the minutes, the next meeting was this whole declaration of, "Don't panic, this is not the end of the oil industry." So it's amazing when you look back how this industry has always felt like it's about to end, it's about to be a crisis. And we always of course come out of it stronger, but learning as we go. And I think we're in this critical learning phase now.
Judith? I'm going back again to the, to the seventies because I introduced the whole concept of sending out to people newsletters with interviews and things about what, what they could hear, what they can see at Offshore Europe. And I interviewed quite a lot of people, including the Energy Minister of the time and various other great and good people who all said, "And when the oil runs out," there was this incredible feeling that, you know, every last drop was about to go. And I went to see the then, uh, Conference Chairman of Offshore Europe, a chap called, if my memory serves me right, Davison John, who worked at Misa. He had a lovely office that opened at the harbour, I can see all of that really clearly because he had his back to the view and I kept thinking, "Wow, what a view." Um, and I said, and of course, "When the oil runs out." And he, it was like a cartoon, he banged his desk and everything went up in the air and he said, "Not you as well, I thought you understood." I thought, "Craggy, what have I done?" He said, "Young men come through the door." I don't often see young women, but young men come through the door asking just that question and I say, "It's going to see me out, it's going to see you out, it'll probably see your children out." And of course, Sheikh Yomani made the point that the Stone Age didn't run out due to lack of stones. Equally, the oil industry isn't going to run out because of the lack of oil. In, I think nineteen seventy-nine, the conference was almost entirely devoted to tertiary recovery, again, because of this absolutely pessimistic view that we surely can't be this lucky, can we? So my goodness me, we have seen pessimism, optimism, pessimism, well, we've seen it all a lot, boom and bust, boom and bust is all part of all of that, isn't it?
And it's what, it's what we do with that, isn't it? When you come out of that cycle, it's like, okay, you know, policy's adjusting or reality's changing, demand is changing and it's what, as an industry, we do with that that's so critical and to this point of what the supply chain's doing now. You know, I think that we've gone through a phase over the last three years where policymakers around the world have had a lot to say about, you know, what Deirdre was talking about, you know, the need to decarbonise, which we all support. But then of course Russian invasion in Ukraine then makes us realise, but we also need security and then that, of course, has also post-COVID created a cost crisis. This balance is not that easy. And what is critical and what the supply chain really understands is they need to keep making money. Ultimately, as much as we all want to do, and I'm not going to say the right thing, we all want to do everything, uh, ultimately it's about firstly, where is the commercial opportunity? And that's what the supply chain is always a barometer of. If you understand what the supply chain is doing, it tells you a lot about what the industry is doing and the direction of the industry. And if you walk around the show today, and it's a really great example of this, and I've been speaking to so many companies in our pavilion and actually just generally, there is a buzz. Why is there a buzz? Because they're making money, their order books are, some of them are at record breaking levels now. And it is oil and gas business largely, and as much as we're all seeing a lot of excitement around transition, most of the core work currently is oil and gas. It's a changing oil and gas environment, some of it is decarbonisation of our oil and gas industry, but it is oil and gas. So I think we're in a phase now where there is truly a role for all energy sectors and it's as an integrated industry. And Sir Jimmy Milne, he was talking there about Valmarl's involved in offshore wind and involved in, you know, oil and gas. I think more and more companies now are involved in all energy sectors. So it's an integrated supply chain and they have, but it's ultimately where are they making money? And these shows live or die based upon, is there money to be made in this industry? And is there money to be made in this region? And so I think there's a, it's kind of lining up right now to an important time where industry's starting to make money again and it's what they do with that money for the good of the future. And I think this show needs to be the voice of that debate. Uh, so I'd be interested to see what others think, but I feel like this show has such an important role in the next five years to make sure, as we now come through a phase where we know oil and gas is going to be strong again for a while because of energy security and a rebound after ten years of underinvestment in oil and gas, that money has to be reinvested in the right way for the future. And the show has to be the bait for that.
Yeah. And, and the show is in effect, it's like a shopfront to the next generation of, um, energy workers. And, uh, you, we, we talk so much about they need to bring new, new skills in and continuing to make the, the oil and gas energy, uh, the oil and gas industry as it's transitioning still attractive to young people to make them want to come and work in that industry and, but be part of the transition as well. Allow me now to get some thoughts, but we, we spoke about it a little bit earlier about, um, just how Offshore Europe is helping to attract young people to play a role in the energy transition.
The event, I hope, will provide reassurance to any young person that the energy industry has got a real long term future and a chance for a long term successful career for each of them. There's a range of new opportunities in different disciplines. So we're evolving from just oil and gas into a range of other energy activities. Younger generations can take confidence that by entering the wider energy industry, they'll be at the very heart of seeking to address global climate and energy security challenges, which are so vital for the future.
I think it's really good that we encourage the next generation to come along to see what's there and to see how they can help address some of the key issues that are challenging the world, you know, in terms of climate change and also getting the balance with security of energy supply.
And innovation and young people. I mean, if you go along to offshore Europe and see all the latest technology there is there and see what turns them on and say, hey, you know, and don't be shy to go into the, on the stands, because they'll welcome them. Because young people are, I mean, we're taking on heaps and heaps of graduates. And it's amazing, amazing how clever all these guys are.
So I think over the years, yeah, very much I've seen a shift, which is very welcome. We've seen many more women, younger generations attending, and it makes a difference. It makes for a different vibrancy and, you know, it makes for a real feel of a happening place where, you know, positive things are happening and the agenda is being moved on in the right way.
I carried out an interview this morning with a very young couple of exhibitors who were over from Belgium, graduates. And they were saying, this is our first offshore Europe. I said, you realise it's been fifty years of offshore Europe? Yeah, yeah, yeah. And just so fresh, just so new into the industry. I also saw a lovely Katie from OEUK yesterday, Supply Chain Director, I think Katie's title is of my heart. And she was bringing her daughter, who's training to be an engineer with her, bringing her to offshore Europe. That's, I love seeing that kind of thing.
Well, in my next life, I'm coming back as an engineer in the energy industry. I'm not quite sure what I'm going to be doing. But I've met so many engineers over the past forty eight years, and that's going to be me.
I think for me, it's a moraloid industry and I had great opportunities to travel.
Yeah.
And someone else is picking up the tab. And that's worth doing, I can assure you, it really is, you know. Travel the world, you know, lived in Houston for five years, Mexico for two years. I would never have had that if I weren't in the world industry, you know, and I'd still been plumbing in Aberdeen, you know. And that's the opportunity gives young people and the technological advances, you know. And some of the people worked at both at Stock and I'm engineering, they're very clever people, you know, they really are. And it's good, they can continue with that, you know, because I think, well, energy is going to be here for a very long time yet. Different forms, you know, but it will be here. And I think if they make that transition, there's some great opportunities going forward, really do.
Yes, Gordon.
Yeah, I think, you know, the one I think offshore engineering, offshore Europe, so we've talked about is, you know, it reflects what's happened in the industry. It reflects back in the seventies what was happening, eighties, nineties. Now, after a gap of four years, there's quite a big change. There's a lot more renewables, a lot of discussion around talent, attraction, et cetera. And that's what we have to do in our own plan for next two years will be the same. And it's done an excellent job of, you know, as well the products, but also reflecting what's happening, whether it's post-Bike or Alpha. I remember two thousand and eleven, one year after Deepwater Horizon, I ran a very successful session on Subsea Well Response. And we got over, he came over from the United States, tackle Michael Bromwich, who'd just been appointed by Obama to restructure the Gulf of Mexico. And he came over because he wanted to talk to us about what was happening. And that led to quite a lot of developments in this part of the world, separating the various responsibilities. And then we set up building our own stack. Do you remember when they'd kit the huge big Osprag stack sitting outside? Then developed the Subsea Well Response project. So it's been a real centre for that kind of discussion. That's where people come to talk about what's going on and develop that.
Yeah.
Whatever's happened, whether it's a transition, whether it's the products that are required, the things that are required, it's important for offshore Europe to stay relevant.
Yeah.
And that's driven by people like Sells, Chan, the kind of movement sure making, plus the suppliers. Because in the end, the industry has to be vibrant, people have to make money.
Yeah, of course.
They do. And I think if you, we're talking about how, you know, offshore Europe needs to adapt. It is the energy industry. It's not old energy versus new energy. It's the energy industry. And it's always been technology led, innovation led, cutting edge led. So while its companies work out what it is that they offer and how that applies to these different industries, they straddle and they move between them. I agree, they need to make money. Supply chain's very good at understanding where it can make money or simply not focusing on it because they can't afford to. So the fact that we're seeing even more companies here this year, and many that I've spoken to have been very open that nearly fifty percent of their revenues come from broader energy sources, you know, as we see going forward, and that their margin is roughly the same as well. So they're working it out. And I think what's even more encouraging for me is, I've just spoken to a heap of companies, this is the first time at offshore Europe. They see it as relevant to the energy industry. And let's be clear, the energy industry is going nowhere. Demand is growing and will continue to grow for decades and decades. It's how we fulfil that will change and balance will change.
Yeah, absolutely.
But the skills topic point of view, so obviously there's kind of talk, isn't there, in the industry now of a skills crisis? I mean, we're saying what we're seeing, if you talk to the supply chain, is a skills concern. But if we get any busier, we will run out of skill. And a lot of companies would now say they're just about able to handle this increasing workload with the skills they have. If you believe the data about the number of projects that are going to come through in all sectors, because oil and gas is doing well, but it does look like a lot of hydrogen, carbon capture, other offshore wind and floating, all these projects are coming. If they all come through, as the forecast says, and hopefully we don't have some kind of crisis that stops this, we will not have enough skills. And then you are into the core issue of why are we not attracting the next wave of talent into our industry? And I think one of the ways to help us work this through is when you analyse the supply chain, let's just pick the UK supply chain. There are three and a half thousand companies in the UK energy supply chain that's defined as companies with more than a million pound revenue. It's actually about ten thousand, a long tail of small companies. So three and a half thousand that are the main employers. And of those, most of them are in all sectors. So give you an example, there's a thousand of the three and a half thousand that have capabilities in offshore wind, but eight hundred of those came from oil and gas. There are seven hundred that are strong in nuclear, eighty percent of those came from oil and gas. So oil and gas is at the heart of our legacy as an energy nation, as an energy hub. And it's at the heart of our future. We have to kind of understand, kind of, I would say to policymakers, they need to stop labelling. We're going to move from one industry to another industry. We're going to take people out of oil and gas and put them into renewables.
It's a transition.
Yeah, but it's the, my word is, it's the same companies and it's the same people.
Yeah, it's the same energy.
So we need to attract people in understanding that. And our language has to say that.
Totally agree.
So we're starting to look really what the outcomes might be from this offshore Europe. But let's also get some thoughts about the possible outcomes of offshore Europe in the years to come.
I think I must say confidence and optimism. It's understandable that young people are uncertain right now. There's a lot of debate taking place around the future of oil and gas. And that clearly can make people nervous. I mean, we need to turn that on its head. We need, we will need oil and gas for the next, I don't know, twenty, thirty, twenty, thirty, forty years. But we can manage it now on the basis that we've got carbon capture and storage, on the basis that we can transfer a lot of the energy into hydrogen. And hydrogen's a very positive, good fuel to be used. So we have the tools at our disposal to be a positive force for good in the race to effectively net zero. And that's where we're trying to go.
So I really hope that offshore Europe twenty twenty three will absolutely show where the industry is making a difference, both in terms of security of energy supply and in tackling climate change. I think that is really important and offshore Europe has a key role to play there. I also hope that obviously it's here in Aberdeen in the North East and it can really start to show how Aberdeen is moving from being the centre for oil and gas to the centre for energy transition.
Ah, now that is an interesting point. Aberdeen and what offshore Europe has done for the city of Aberdeen in the North East region as a whole. Jim, can I put that to you?
Yeah, I mean, I go back to the seventies, Aberdeen, you had, you could, when you left school, you get a job in the shipyards. It was Horus or John Lewis. You could go at the paper mills, which was Stonywood, Moggy Moss, Thomas Tateson and Warrurie or Cooter Mills. That was the construction industry. And that was what all there was. But then oil came and it's fairly boomed it, you know. Again, back in the sixties and seventies, it was Hillman Imps, Ford Escorts. Nowadays, look at it, it's all BMWs, Audis, Range Rovers, you know. And that's the poor people, you know. And it has made a big difference. You need to look at the restaurants around Aberdeen. In the seventies and eighties when it came, there were very few restaurants. Then you had Chinese restaurants, Indian restaurants, then you had all the nightclubs opening up, you know. The Americans were here, they weren't afraid to splash the cash, you know, go boot with their stencils and their cowboy boots and their big cigars, you know. And Aberdeen has prospered enormously, you know. Probably people like myself would still be living in council houses because I was brought up in a council estate, you know. But it's made a big difference to a lot of people. You've had to work hard for it, you know, but it really has. The city itself, I know you people aren't from Aberdeen, but you've saw it grow, you know. Aberdeen finished at the end of Maastricht, probably forty years ago. You know, past West Hills, you know, you're almost at Cooter, all these areas melt timber, all because of the oil business, you know. And it has prospered. And we need to continue to do that, you know. And I know it's taken a bit of a knock the last few years, but we'll get over that. It's just a cycle, you know. Go back to Dundee ten, fifteen years ago, it was done on its legs, you know. But hey, we'll come back, we will. We've got good people in here, you know.
And what do you think in the next fifty years of offshore Europe, it might look like, Jim?
It'll be changed definitely. There'll be a lot of artificial intelligence. We'll probably have offshore Europe in twenty years' time, you'll be sitting in your houses, you know, probably. And you'll be able to tap into everything that's here, yeah. I know I'm kidding, but that's the thing, you know.
I mean, the great joy of live events is actually, in my case, being able to hug people, to really, you know, to get to their soul. Which sitting in a little box.
I think today, after Covid, we've all come through that, you know, and it's great to see people again.
Yes.
It's great to meet with people, see the whites of their eyes, have a cuddle, you know, that kind of, just great to see them. What have you been doing? What have you been up to? How's business going, you know?
And how are the children and things like that?
Or the grandchildren in my case, you know.
Yes, in my case too.
But that's how it is, you know. It's, Aberdeen will prosper, you know, it's got a long way to go, but it will do it, you know. And we've got some great people in the industries we're working, you know, they really are, so.
Well, let's have a wee think, even touching on what you're talking about there. What the biggest impact of offshore Europe is going to be, that legacy?
Deeply important, obviously, as we all know. That's the whole basis for shows like ours or any other show. Face to face meetings, discussion between people and the need to exchange ideas and information at all levels, at all times. So a show, any show, which is able to attract visitors who want to buy things and exhibitors who want to sell things, is doing a very, very good job indeed on behalf of that industry.
I would like people to excuse, hey, I've had a good exhibition. Boy, I was wonderful coming there, you know. Good contacts with people, things we've learned and seen. It's a great exhibition in a thousand different ways, I suppose. I just hope it doesn't rain as it has done a few times.
Offshore Europe has clearly proven the enterprising impact over the years. Bringing out the North East of Scotland's pioneering and industrious spirit to a global audience. I mean, put very simply, it's put Aberdeen and the wider region on the map.
So it's a great event to launch major initiatives because of all the people that you have there. You know, the diversity of the people that you have, the diversity of companies who turn up across the whole supply chain, operators right the way through, right the way through the supply chain. And of course, you know, increasingly, it's more than oil and gas. We've got the wind folk there, we've got carbon capture storage, we've got hydrogen. This is about integrated energy and that's what SPE, offshore Europe, can really drive forward in twenty twenty three.
Offshore Europe was once described to me as the Glastonbury of the energy industry. I mean, that's why we all keep coming back for it, but it's less muddy. I'd really interested now, as we start to kind of sum up, to get your own personal views of what you think the lasting impact of offshore Europe will be. Stuart, I'll start with you.
Yeah, so you mentioned, aren't we lucky to be able to travel around the world in this amazing industry? So if you travel around the world in this amazing industry, you will meet Scots and Brits who have been in this industry and have been lucky enough to not just travel but become expats and then live around the world. And if you go to all the energy hubs of the world now, and these are the energy hubs that are becoming energy hubs, not just oil and gas hubs, you're going to meet tens of thousands of Brits and Scots who came from here, this region, and have moved around the world and stayed there. So for me, the lasting legacy of North East Scotland and what we've done here, including offshore Europe, has created a global network of people, talented people, literally hundreds of thousands of people. If you add them up around the world, who came from here and now live around the world, represent this nation and this technology. And we completely devalue that, I think. What an amazing opportunity is to not see ourselves as, I don't know, some kind of sector that's changing. We have this amazing community around the world already and they represent us already. And it's not a legacy issue, it's a future issue. They're there now, they want to drive the future. They're already there, working in amazing companies. Some of those companies are still British companies now. Maybe some of them work in overseas companies, but they're Brits who were trained here, came from here, moved around the world, they represent us. I think that legacy is so powerful and there's so much more we could do. And I think offshore Europe has a chance to plug them all in to their heritage here and really make this feel like it is a global community centred here. And I think the other thing I would say is offshore Europe could be really more European. So we have nine countries that border the North Sea. I don't see enough of those nine countries here really working as one group of countries working for the best optimisation of the assets we have in the North Sea. And I think that's another amazing legacy we have, that, you know, we all know each other, these countries. But maybe this could be the home for optimising the future integrated energy system that is offshore energy. Because we can't all build our own offshore wind farms and then have all of the wasted energy that comes from that. We can't all build our own hydrogen storage. It should be an integrated shared system, one North Sea. This surely is, what an amazing event to house that debate as well. So I think there's a lot to be proud of, but I really do feel like we've just started.
My offshore wind expert in the panel is nodding her head.
I guess for me, I was looking forward, legacy's the wrong word. I want to focus on what offshore Europe would be in the future. Offshore Europe has always been about cutting edge innovation, technology, for me anyway. I know it's broader than that, but that is what it's about. The energy industry is a growing industry. I want to see offshore Europe thrive and be a part of that. I want to see people moving to Aberdeen, not from Aberdeen. Because this is the centre of where we're able to pull it all together. I truly hope we aren't still talking about diversity in the next twenty to thirty years' time, but that we've solved it. And I think probably the challenge will be, as you've mentioned, we'll all be talking about the balance needed between artificial intelligence, computational power versus human softer learning skills. And how do we balance that going forward? So I see a bright future for offshore Europe if it maintains the same focus that it always has.
Gordon, do you agree? Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, I think that, like any conference exhibition, it will succeed if it reflects the business environment and the suppliers and the companies that are buying. And we've done an excellent job of doing that. And it's in the middle of, just like the industry's transitioning into something. I mean, offshore Europe's quite a special place because they are, of course, energy, all energy shows, wind energy shows it. So offshore Europe sort of has to maintain that nexus focused very much in the North Sea. Relevant to what people want to talk about, adapting to the various changes, reflecting issues, whether that's artificial intelligence, safety issues, talent, training, technology. But it's got off to a great start with the first fifty years, so the next fifty should be no problem.
Jim, you have to keep coming to offshore Europe because I can't come here without you. You're my staple.
You've always said that, I know. For me, the legacy is, I worked offshore, as I said, and when I started, safety was non existent. But offshore Europe's given companies an opportunity to showcase what they can do. And you talk about health and safety, it's not about the safety, it's about the health of your people, you know. All the things we'd, the company I worked for, we did asbestos removal, things like that, to make sure everything was squeaky clean. You don't want anyone getting hotter or getting an illness, you know. So for me, that's the legacy. I worked in Piper Alpha seventy eight, seventy nine, you know, that was a disaster, you know. But from there, it's come on and offshore Europe has helped to sort of maintain that health and safety focus that everyone should adopt. Everyone, you know, never be afraid to challenge anyone if you see them doing something unsafe. And that was part of offshore Europe's message many years ago, you know. And that's such a legacy, I feel, it has left on me, you know.
And Judith, you're blooming superwoman. I think you could beat the next fifty offshore Europe, knowing you.
I just have to ram everybody's thoughts here together because I don't think any words have been missed out. You know, it's innovation, it's safety, it's enthusiasm, it's passion for what we're achieving and moving things forward so that people can use energy. That's what it's all about, whatever form it comes in, we need these lights on, we need to be born. And forward we go. I'm sorry, that's a bit of a flat one, but I think they nicked all the best words.
This has been a real joy to gather all your thoughts. And I'm delighted that we've had it recorded in its entirety. And it will be put online as a special broadcast, a special programme from offshore Europe. a special programme from offshore Europe. It will, it will live forever. As, you know, as I said, as a very young inexperienced journalist going to offshore Europe back in the nineties, I could never have imagined that I'd be sitting here now with the really honourable job of paying tribute to offshore Europe for the past fifty years, which has been such a stalwart of the city that I call home. And personally, I was quite amused, shocked, I'm not sure what the word is, that when I was doing my research, I noted that the first offshore Europe took place fourteen days after I was born. So happy half century to us both. Together, you know, we couldn't possibly have done justice to the hundreds of people from the city, from the North East, from beyond, who've helped in the development of the show over the years. But my goodness, we've given it a good go. So to those unsung heroes of the last five decades, we do pay tribute. And I'd ask you now to show your appreciation for my panel here today. Thank you. It's been a joy. And I'd just like to give the final word to the founder of offshore Europe, David Stott.
I'm very proud of what we were able to do in Aberdeen as a result of starting that show and going through all the various vicissitudes and triumphs which had entailed over the period of years absent.
Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy the rest of the show.